Commission meeting for September 22nd will come to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner Gault? Commissioner Rhodes?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Kahler?
Present. Tonight, we have Michael Jenkins with Relevant Church. He's the youth leader there to do our invocation. And then, as soon as we have our invocation, Lucas Wadley will come up and do our pledge of allegiance. And Lucas is a Clark Elementary 5th grader.
Father God, we just, we come to you tonight and we just thank you and we love you and for all that you do for us, God. And we just lift up this city, just for all the decisions being made and all the businesses and tourists, just thinking about where to go, God. We just pray that you point them in this direction. We just pray for growth and prosperity for Paducah. And I just pray for the commission meeting, that everything runs smoothly and everyone gets home safe tonight. Amen, pray. Amen.
Amen. Lucas?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lucas. You've come back again, okay? Have a good school year. Commissioner Abraham, you have the minutes, please.
I do. I moved that the reading of the minutes for the Sept-
What did I do wrong? Oh.
I didn't say you did anything.
Oh.
But you did.
Sorry.
We're supposed to have our property tax-
Oh, that's right.
-public hearing. Sorry.
Additions or deletions?
Yes, you have a deletion.
Come down there.
Item six-
Now, people watch this later and go, she doesn't know what she's doing.
Well, they probably don't say that.
We do have a deletion, item 6B, under ordinance introduction.
Thank you. Okay, John. Sorry, I was planning on leaving you off tonight.
Sorry, I just-
Is this copy for me?
Yeah, it's for you. I made it for you. But you'll love this. Like that. Here's the great one. Read this right there. That one line, you'll love it. Oh, gosh, John.
Yeah.
Wow.
I think they got all this with their-
Yeah. It was part of the packet.
Yeah.
I guess A goes before B. Depends. Whichever you like.
You should have three handouts, and we'll talk about them just briefly. The purpose of this public hearing is to give the public an opportunity to comment on the proposed 25.5 cent real estate tax levy. A hearing is required by Kentucky revised statutes when the proposed tax rate exceeds the compensating rate, which this year is 24.7 cents. Local government is permitted to adjust the tax rate upward by 4% over the compensating rate, which would be 24.7 times 104%, bringing it up to 25.6 cents. Please direct your attention, if you would, to the chart with the letter A on it, and then you can see our history for several years back. It'll, it'll give you a good idea of the last couple decades, what our rate has been, actual, what the compensating rate has been, and what the maximum rate could have been. And over that period of time, we've only, there's only been one time where we took the absolute maximum we could take, and that was in the year 2014, just a couple years ago. Later in the regular city commission meeting tonight, the proposed property tax levy ordinance will be introduced. Staff recommends that you set the city's real estate property tax levy at 25.5 cents, the same as last year, which makes it 4.5 cents lower than it was in 2001, as shown on the chart that's headed up, real estate property levy that you have with the big letter B on it, so you can see the big history there. Now, the final reading for the tax levy ordinance will occur on October 6th, as scheduled, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time about any of that what I've just spoken up.
Kind of speak for themselves, don't they?
Pictures usually do a pretty good job of telling the story.
Yeah. It's about 1,000 words, I believe, was it?
Something like that.
Something like that.
And our property tax levy is just a portion of the macrocosm of the entire property tax bill that people receive.
It is. In fact, look at that, now, we didn't talk about this specifically, but that little chart I gave you, the yellow numbers, those in the last, since 95, that is what belongs to the city. Like, in 1995, our levy was 45 cents, basically. The total tax bill was almost $1.10, so we were, what, 45% of the whole bill that we collect. But you go all the way down to 2016, now we're 25.5 cents in the total bills, just slightly less than it was, you know, those 20 years ago. But our portion is substantially less, you know, that's what, about 25%.
What's the ratio of, in 1995, our property tax versus what the school collected compared to now?
Well, if you look at that, that same chart, you can see the cities in yellow, we were 45 cents. Go to your right, three columns, and the school's tax rate was 56 cents. Today, ours is 25.5 cents, or proposed to be, and theirs is 80. So we've gone down, they've gone up. The ratio is-
But is the ratio the same?
I don't, I don't know that I understand.
Our tax to theirs?
No, 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 no. No. See, back in 95, I guess the ratio would be, what, about 90% of what they had, we were getting, and now it's, what, close to 30%? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Close to that.
Because 30% would be .24, so, yeah, just slightly 30%.
Yeah. Yeah, the ratio, the gap is really, really widened.
That's really a pretty stunning figure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is, indeed. And that graphic B will also, that pictorially tells you, you can look at the same thing. The school is red, back at that time, no, this only goes back to 2001, and you just watch it go up over time and watch ours go down over the same period of time. You can see the ratio there, graphically.
John, when do we eliminate the inventory tax? I mean, I can remember it years ago in the car business, but I can't remember when we-
Yeah. I remember when I showed up in 91, there was some kind of lawsuit where car dealers, I think sued, and won. And, well, you asked. And, and the state eliminated inventory tax on car inventories, as you'll remember, they eliminated it.
Did that spark the inventory and everything else?
Well, I paid it in my business, too, when we had-
Right.
-the inventory.
Yeah, you do. I don't know how to say this, except to say that they filed a lawsuit, and they won, and the state said you can't tax inventory of cars. However, everybody else had the privilege of paying. And so, the city in about-
98?
I think it must have been 97, 98, city to county got together and said, hey, we're, we're going to eliminate inventory tax for everybody, for the city and the county tax and junior college tax. Now, I don't think the school system could go along with it by law, but we could. And we phased it out from 97, 98 through, what, 2003, something like that, I can't remember exactly. Yeah, five-year period. And at the top, the biggest collection back at that time, that amounted to, in one year, about, probably about 3/4 of a million dollars per year. About half of that came from just a couple of companies, but we eliminated, city and the county got rid of it. Phased it out over time. And I think since then, I think the state has fixed it where you couldn't bring it back anyway. I think that's the case. However, the school continues to have the tax, so when people come in and they pay the inventory tax, and they write the check out to the city of Paducah, they, people tend to think, well, we're still collecting inventory tax. Well, we are, but we're not collecting it for the city. We collect it for the school only, because we're required to. So, anytime you drop your tax rate and someone else that we collect for raises their tax rate, they still make the check out to the city of Paducah, and they get aggravated because tax went up. But that's just the way it works.
Well, I remember at the dealership, we would sort of save all year long to pay for that. I remember my dad paying them, and he'd go down and make his payment down here.
Yeah.
We'd walk down here and pay it.
In nickels?
I miss the nickel days.
You always came back in kind of a foul mood.
I can appreciate that.
Did you almost fall out of your-
Yes. No, I can't, it was too low, and I was looking up at Alan, so I decided to raise it.
You're all just- Thanks.
Anything else?
I don't have anything else, unless the public or you all have something.
Can we frame these?
No.
For framing.
Did you like me to autograph them?
Mine, sure.
I appreciate your work on it, keeping it.
Thanks, John. Okay, so now I can-
Now we're, close the hearing.
We don't have to make a motion or-
No.
Okay. Commissioner Abraham, the minutes, please.
I move that the reading of the minutes for September 15th, 2015, city commission meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye. I have a couple of resolutions here. I move that a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Supporting the Location of Shoreline Steel South LLC by Rebating the 1% Payroll Tax on Certain Kedva Program for Eligible Positions Be Adopted." I will.
Second.
Second.
Do we need to vote out before he gives the-
No, he can go ahead and tell it.
In, in 2011, Shoreline Steel broke ground on a 20,000 square foot facility on South 16th Street. At that time, they announced they would employ 13 full-time employees at a, at a rate of $15.60 per hour and invest a total of $1.18 million in, in the city of Paducah. Construction began on their facility in May in 2012, and they began operations later on in 2013. They now employ 17 people at their location next to National Railway Equipment. They're a manufacturer of steel piling for applications in things like erosion control for seawall construction, soil stabilization in highway construction, as well as various other applications. We think this is an important project, A, because it shows diversification in our manufacturing base. The more, the more companies we bring in here that can do different things, that aren't just based in one industry, the better we're set for the future moving forward. So, it's a new industry, it's a newer industry for Paducah and a, and a way to diversify. Second, yes, these are, these aren't your 100-job project or 50-job project, it's only 13 jobs, now 17, but our philosophy is always going to be quality over quantity. We'd rather have five to 10 companies employing 10 to 20 people at, 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 at pay levels like this than 100 or 200 jobs that pay much, that pay less than a living wage. So, quantity, quality over quantity is, is, is what we're going to look at moving forward. So, we think this is a good project, and I think the future Paducah is in small projects, small manufacturing projects like this with different manufacturing base and, and higher wage jobs.
Sounds great. Thanks, Will.
Thank you, ma'am.
Call the roll?
Yes.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye. Second resolution, I move that a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Making Declaration of Official Intent With Respect to Reimbursement of Temporary Advances Made for Capital Expenditures to Be Made From Subsequent Borrowing Be Adopted." Second. I need a second.
Second.
Jonathan, do you want to speak to this?
Mayor, did you cast that out at the table? Resenee?
The purpose of this resolution is basically to reserve the right for the city to pay itself back if we spend any money toward that particular named project and the future bond issue. That's all it really does. So, if we spend the money before we borrow the money, then we can pay ourselves back.
Any questions? All right. Thanks, John. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye. Under our motion, Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay. I move that the following documents and bids be received and filed. Documents: Notice of Cancellation of Board of Commissions for September 8th, 2015; Partial Deed of Release for 5420 Tuck Road Tammy and Darlene Fle- Darlene Fletcher; Contracts Agreements; Contract for Services with Barclay Regional Airport Authority; Inter-local Agreement for Acceptance and Administration of the Edward Byrne Justice Assistant Grant, JAG Award; Trust Participation Agreement with the Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services General Insurance Trust; Declaration of Trust and Trust Participation Agreement with the Kentucky League of Cities Workers' Compensation Trust; Bid for Engineering Public Works Department; 2015 Satarm Refuge Truck; McBride Mac Stringfellow and Municipal Equipment, Non-Responsive bidder; and a 2015 Sweeper from Stringfellow Municipal Equipment, No Bid.
Second.
And, wait a minute, hold on, hang on. And Request for Qualifications, Plane Department- We will do this? No, we do that. Anyway. Request for Qualifications, Plane Department; Design and Architectural Services for New Renovated City Hall Ratio RBS Design Group Architecture; Murphy Graves Trimble PLLC; and Brandsider Carroll Incorporated.
Second. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
I don't want to see bails out so fast.
Okay, under municipal orders, Commissioner Wilson, please.
Upon recommendation of the city manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah ordered that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
Steve?
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, fairly routine matters.
Any questions? City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Memorandum of Understanding Between the Department of the Army and the City of Paducah for Work Provided or Performed Prior to Execution of a Project Partnership Agreement for the Ohio River Shoreline, Paducah, Kentucky Be Adopted."
Second. Hi, Rick.
Mayor Commission, this is MOU that is put before you this evening is, I guess, yet another instrument we need through the federal government. Since we do not have a partner, I would say, project partnership agreement in place yet, we continue to do work on the flood wall that is already scheduled as part of our rehabilitation project, and as these parts fail, we're replacing them at 100% of our cost. So, what this does, this allows us to recover those costs and get counted toward the project once we sign a PPA, which is a partnership agreement with the Army. So, this gives us credit as we spend for those things that we know are going to be replaced during a bigger project.
And then we get paid back?
Actually, it's credit, it's a 65-35 match, so for every dollar that is spent on the project, 65 cents of that is a federal dollar and 35 cents is a local portion for that. But, again, as I said, for example, let's just say that we had to repair a pump that is scheduled to be part of a bigger project, and let's say that pump cost $100,000. We would pay the full $100,000 to get that pump fixed, however, that $100,000 would parlay itself into whatever, $100,000, $350,000 in value toward a bigger project. So, this, this is just a marker, so as things fail while we're working on the project, and we've been working on this project since 1998. So, I'm, I'm just wanting to see the project done before I retire, so.
How many more miles?
How many more miles?
Do you have to go?
Before I retire, or years?
Before you retire this project.
I don't know. I don't know. It's, it's, it's something that is literally an act of Congress to fulfill-
I did mention it while we were in Washington.
Mm-hmm. So, every, every step of the way has to be cleared at that level, and it's, it's just laborious, and I, I don't know, it's just taking forever. But, at least, we will get our credits where our credits are due, that will get us the monies that we deserve.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye. Ordinance's adoptions, we've already gone over all these, so Commissioner Rhodes, please.
All right. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing and Approving the Sale of Surplus Municipal-Owned Real Property at 421 North 5th Street, Paducah, Kentucky, McCracken County, for Purposes of Redevelopment and Revitalization in the Lower Town Neighborhood." This ordinance is summarized as follows. In the, in this ordinance, the City of Paducah, Kentucky, city declares city-owned real property with improvements located at 421 North 5th Street in Paducah, McCracken County, Kentucky as surplus property, and authorizes the sale of the surplus property to Adam Moyers and Brandy Harless, who are the successful bidders offering to purchase the property for a purchase price in the amount of $1, and their commitment to invest $175,984 in the complete rehabilitation and the improvements located on the property in accordance with the designs and plans to be approved by the Historic Architecture Review Committee of the city for purposes of redevelopment and revitalization in the Lower Town Neighborhood. This ordinance further authorizes the mayor of the City of Paducah, Kentucky to execute and deliver a special warranty deed of conveyance of the surplus property with reverter provisions.
Second.
And so ends the last, this is the last city-owned piece of property in Lower Town, and it goes to a delightful young couple.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Congratulations, Brandy and Adam.
The piece of property that, that was vacant, that didn't get developed, is that still privately owned, or does that-
There's still, no, they're-
Or did that go back to-
Piece on North 6th Street, in the next block from us, is available. I think there is somebody who's working on that. There is a piece of property between Martin Luther King and Park Avenue, next to the Chemical Lawn Company, that's available. And there's a tiny sliver of property over on North 7th, across from Terracottage. And those three pieces are the last three pieces of any property in Lower Town. Make your plan.
Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Approving the Execution of an Agreement and All Documents Relating Thereunto with the U.S. Department of Justice for a 2015-2016 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Accountability Grant through the U.S. Department of Justice to be used by the Paducah Police. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby approves the execution of a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the U.S. Department of Justice for a 2015-2016 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Accountability Grant in the amount of $10,912 to be used by the Paducah Police Department to purchase body-worn cameras, no local matches required."
Second.
City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a reimbursable grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the U.S. Department of Justice for Bulletproof Vests Partnership Grant Program Award." This ordinance is summarized as follows. The mayor is hereby authorized to execute a reimbursable grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the United States Department of Justice for a Bulletproof Vests Partnership Grant Program Award in the amount of $12,644.54 for assistance with purchasing bulletproof vests to be used by the Paducah Police Department.
Second.
Second.
Second. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing and Directing the Finance Director to Make Payment to the Paducah-McCracken County Convention and Visitors Bureau for Cost of Hosting the 2015 REAVAC FLW Series Championship on the Ohio River in Paducah." This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby authorizes and directs its finance director to make payment in the amount of $22,500 to the Paducah-McCracken County Convention and Visitors Bureau for cost of hosting the 2015 REAVAC FLW Series Championship, which be held on the Ohio River in Paducah.
Second.
That, that, that's a great company.
Yeah.
It's, and, yeah, right out of Benton, Kentucky. I did some work with them a few years ago, and it's very family-oriented. They, they really do a great job of putting on a tournament.
So, hopefully, we'll have more of those.
Yeah, hope so.
You ever been to a bass weigh-in?
No. Was that a bass weigh-in you and I went to that time?
I don't think it was bass, it was-
Catfish?
Yeah, I think so. I'm not sure.
I've never been to a catfish weigh-in, but, but bass weigh-ins, they-
It was some big fish.
We were in Hot Springs, Arkansas, in an arena that held 10,000 people, and it was packed, for a bass weigh-in, so they really do a good job. I don't know how many people you'd get in for a catfish weigh-in, but-
Probably not as many.
Not quite as pretty of thing.
Where you're older, I guess.
Going to our ordinance's introduction, Commissioner, what?
Can I call the roll first?
No.
Sorry. Please.
Okay.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye. It's Commissioner Abraham's fault.
Sorry.
Ordinance's introduction, Commissioner Wilson.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Fixing the Levis and Rates of Taxation on All Property in the City of Paducah, Kentucky, Subject to Taxation for Municipal Purposes and for School Purposes for the Period from July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2016, with the purposes of said taxes hereunder defined. Purpose: General Fund of the City, and all of these are rate per $100, General Fund of the City, real property, 0.255; personal property, 0.390; motor vehicles and watercraft, 0.390; school purposes, Paducah Junior College, real estate, 0.017; personal properties, 0.17; motor vehicles and watercraft, 0.031. The City of Paducah shall collect the following taxes for the Board of Education. Paducah Independent School District, real property, 0.800; personal property, 0.800; and inventory, 0.800. I don't think I'm reading these consistently, but hopefully you got it. Total tax rate per 100, real property, 1.072; total tax rate per 100, personal property, 1.207; total tax rate per 100, inventory, 0.800; total tax rate per 100, motor vehicle and watercraft, 0.421. Property taxes levied herein shall be due and payable in the following manner. In the case of tax bills which reflect an amount due of less than $600, the payment shall be due on November 1, 2015, and shall be payable without penalty and interest until November 30, 2015. In the case of all other tax bills, payment shall be in accordance with the following provisions. The first half payment shall be due on November 1, 2015, and shall be payable without penalty and interest until November 30, 2015. The second half payment shall be due on February 1, 2016, and shall be payable without penalty and interest until February 29, 2016.
Second. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the Finance Director to pay for the emergency repair of the cooling tower at the Parks and Service Building located at 1408 C Mathis Drive. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The Finance Director is hereby authorized to pay to Commercial Marine and Industrial Heating and Air Conditioning, Incorporated, the sum of $26,800 for the service required for the emergency repair of the cooling tower at the Parks Services Building located at 1408 C Mathis Drive.
Second.
Mayor Commission, we have several air-conditioning units that run at the Parks Services Building that depend on this piece of equipment. We got three quotes on this. It is in excess of $20,000 where something is normally competitively bid. Given this item, and it's a critical piece of equipment at the Parks Services Building where your senior citizens are, we wanted to get it repaired as quickly as possible. And CMI produced the lowest quote at $26,000, and we wanted to move forward with that.
I know we'd had several, well, not several, but we'd had some emails about the air-conditioning situation there, so it certainly had to be fixed.
It does, it does, but fortunately, we're at a transition time of the year. I mean, the cooling tower is not used for heating the building, but it is for air-conditioning the building. And we're at that period of year that, you know, you may need heat, you may need air, so we wanted to expedite this repair.
All right. Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the city of Paducah, Kentucky, approving a memorandum of agreement between the city of Paducah, Kentucky, and Paducah &amp; Louisville Railway, Inc., for improvement to an existing at-grade railway crossing. Authorize the Finance Director to issue payment to Paducah &amp; Louisville Railway for costs associated with railway flagging, and authorizing the transfer of funds from the Series 2013 B Bond Proceeds account for the Olivet Church Roadway Project. This ordinance is summarized as follows. In this ordinance, the city is approving a memorandum of agreement with Paducah &amp; Louisville Railway for improvement to an existing at-grade railway crossing for the Olivet Church Roadway Project in the amount of $196,381.81, and is authorizing the mayor to execute said agreement. The city is also authorizing the Finance Director to issue payment at the following rates to railway company for flagging costs associated with the project. Per eight-hour day, flagman $90.03 per hour; truck, $287.80 per day; overtime rates, flagman $138.04 per hour; and truck, $35.98 per hour. Further, the Finance Director is authorized and directed to transfer a portion of the remaining Series 2013 B Bond proceeds to the Olivet Church Road Project account.
Mayor Commission, this is in association, obviously, with the Olivet Church Road Project. That's in the portion of the road where it's in a transition from a five-lane down to a two-lane, where it was going back to the old road that was left there. And now that it's being widened to a five-lane in that particular area, the railroad crossing had to be extended. P&amp;L elected to replace the entire crossing because of the age of the existing crossing, not wanting to put in new ties where some old ties existed. So that is the cost for them to put in the new crossing and the new crossing gates that will be associated with the new roadway. Are there any questions? I could address those.
I'm gonna put you on the spot, but that flagging job, do you think I could apply for that? Sounds like a pretty sweet gig. Or do you have a comment about that?
I don't represent P&amp;L. I mean, I don't, I mean, that is very pricey for that. I actually talked with P&amp;L representatives. I'm like going, well, that's the track that goes out to, you know, the nuclear plant, and like, we could schedule work, not to work during the time that the train would come by. It's, they travel at 15 miles an hour in there. Emergency braking is not an issue, but the way they talked about that is like, it's by a labor agreement that they're there, and that's the rate that they're paid, and they don't reassign them, you know, maybe you need them for two hours, well, they assign them for the entire day. So I don't have, you know, their policies or their-
We have no leverage.
Essentially not.
Is that part of the, is that in addition, that's included in that total bill, that total?
Yes, yes, there's an estimate of how many days that they would be there on that, and it's not uncommon to try to negotiate that down, but that's something that my office may or may not do.
I probably shouldn't say this, but that seems, no, I won't say anything.
And the other thing is, is that this work is actually being contracted and executed by P&amp;L to their satisfaction, and this is actually a reimbursement agreement for the contract work that they have done for themselves. This is not something that we bid ourselves. This is something that's led to a railroad contract expert to do these crossings.
It's coming out of the money for the project.
It is coming out of the money for the project.
More specifically, I do want to point out, just make sure everybody understands that the 2013 Series Bonds is in fact the financing that was procured for the aborted MACO project, so this is the first instance of where the city will officially be reallocating any of those bond proceeds that we've had in hand for a few years.
On another issue, Rick, what about the railroad crossing where the new art schools, that project is going on, there's-
Coming across Ninth Street there on a kind of a diagonal. It will more than likely need a little bit of work after all that construction work is completed. I know that the art school has used that, or excuse me, the art school contractor has used that heavily in the renovation of that building, and more than likely, we'll be over there doing some work on the street and maybe asking P&amp;L, that's also their, they call that their city lead, to do some work there as well.
Okay.
But that work needs to be completed before we attempt to do something.
Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Stringfellow, Inc., for sale to the city of one regenerative street sweeper for use by the Engineering Public Works Department, Street Division, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city of Paducah accepts the bid of Stringfellow, Inc., in the amount of $182,437, for one regenerative street sweeper for use by Engineering Public Works Department, Street Division, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second.
Simple answer to this is one in, one out. We have a retired street sweeper that we need to replace.
How many do we have?
Two.
What happens to old street sweepers?
We auction them off on Gov. deals.
Okay, so we sell it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, great. So you get the guys to shine them up, slick those tires, and roll them?
We do the best we can to get the best we can out of them.
Appearance sells.
I've got a question about rollouts.
Okay, let's make sure we understand the definition of rollout, the can that's at every resident. Okay, the rollout. I call it a Herbie Kirby, but rollout, okay, got it.
What's our ordinance say about that? Since they have wheels, aren't some people supposed to roll them back?
Well-
And they be left out on the curb all the time?
No, no, they're not to be left curbside.
Is that an inordinate?
Yes, it is, but reality is, is that, do we have the manpower or the people power to go out and enforce all those that are left curbside? And the answer is no. But it is an ordinance that everybody who rolls their rollout curbside is supposed to roll it back the evening that they return home. We do have handicap that we actually, you know, there's actually paperwork, it's a different color rollout, that we retrieve at those houses, and then we also have those that are in the alley that don't get rolled out, we just pick them up in the alley. So you have three different services with a rollout.
Well, a neighborhood association would like to have that ordinance number to put in a newsletter.
Okay.
And I told them there was an ordinance to that effect.
It'll either be in 94, in Chapter 94, or 4294, or Chapter 102, let me find it.
Ask a related question. Have a little helpful educational hints tonight. Brush?
Brush.
That's set out to be picked up by the city? Street or on the property line?
It's actually, it's actually be set out roadside so we can get it.
Does that mean on the street?
No, not on the street, roadside. Okay, now, it's kind of hard to define roadside in Paducah sometimes because we have ditches in areas, and we have curbs and gutters in other areas. We need to have it where it's accessible for our workers to get it and place it in a truck and/or our knuckle boom, that clamshell device, to reach it from the street and be able to set it in the truck, but it can only reach so far.
So effectively, it's really not supposed to be in the street?
Not at all.
Do you consider that to be an impediment to safety or-
Absolutely.
-impability if it's in the street?
Absolutely.
Like we often see it being?
Absolutely.
Alan?
I have a question about that, so we-
Do we need a workshop?
We have alley pickup for our garbage, but we're supposed to put the brush between the curb and the sidewalk and not in the alley? Or do you put it where you have your pickup?
Well, we would prefer you put it where you have your pickup. And it's probably an area that we need to do some work on with this body, as well as our solid waste team.
Because it is kind of all over the place.
It is kind of all over the place, and the thing about it is, sometimes, somebody only may have like a few sticks, and then somebody else may have had a tree cut down, and they've lined their entire property frontage with brush, and it's covering the sidewalk, covering the grass strip, it's going out into the street, of which should have been hauled off by the commercial tree cutter who took the tree down, but sometimes it's not, which is another issue. So it's an area that we probably need to do some work, and it's also, you know, as we work with solid waste, on some adjustments that we could provide better service with brush. For example, Mondays are considered brush pickup days, and it's random, and with 223 miles of streets, we won't cover all those in one day with solid waste and street crews. And so there are times where a brush pile might sit out there for a week or two, and it's because it's random. And one thing we'd like to do is maybe make some adjustments such that you do some yard work, you call our office, give us notification that you did some yard work, and we can schedule a time to go out and pick it out, pick it up, and know where the pickups are, rather than to randomly send trucks out into zones and say, all the brush piles you see pick up. That's not exactly effective either.
I might, hold on, I mean, it's a great service, but I think it's not a typical service that cities offer, so I think the people of Paducah are well-served by having that available from the city because it's certainly not the norm out there.
Now, well, and another thing we do with that, of course, we do have a very successful compost yard-
Right.
-that serves as, the brush serves as the bulk material to mix with the byproduct that comes off of the treatment plant, and so we get a two-fold return for that, not from a financial point of view, but there's savings on the JSA or recycling, we're not putting that, and we're not paying money for that to go across the scale and be wasted somewhere, so I think it's a service that can be improved.
Okay. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce and adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of McBride Mac, Incorporated, for the sale to the city of one automated sidearm loader for use by the Solid Waste Division, Engineering Public Works Department, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city of Paducah accepts the bid of McBride Mac, Incorporated, in the amount of $258,732 for sale to the city of one automated sidearm loader for the use by the Solid Waste Division, Public Works Department, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second.
This is a sidearm refuse truck, and this will put us up to four of those trucks. However, we will more than likely be selling one of those trucks this year and be using the remainder as a backup, but we are, at all times, trying to improve our efficiencies with the solid waste department.
Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Section 42-104A, prohibited noises of Chapter 42, Environment, of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city hereby amend Section 42-104A, prohibited noises of Chapter 2, 42, Environment, of the Paducah Code of Ordinances by adding continuous sound pressure levels limits using the weighted C filter.
Need a second.
Basically, what this amendment does to Section 42-104 is our current noise ordinance is measured with a high-frequency meter, and looking at the data out there, showing that low-frequency gives a more accurate measurement reading as to sound effect on human health, so this amendment adjusts our reading from a 65 dB to a 70, which is, which will allow, you know, any business to continue to do business, but when you look at, my thought going into this, looking into this, is that when we pass ordinances or we introduce ordinances, fair and just ordinances, does it, does it affect a business if you're in H2 zone? Will it affect a business from doing business? No. Will it take into consideration the residents living in and around those businesses? Yes. And so adjusting it to a HC, I mean, a low-frequency reading takes care of both of those issues.
So who's, so someone gets a call at night, who's going to go take the reading?
That would be our, I think, our police department.
So are they going to be equipped with equipment to take, to go do a reading, and-
That's correct.
So do we have all of that equipment now?
We do.
And are all the police officers trained on that?
We have police officers trained in that, yes.
I think we have two trained, isn't it?
So if they're not on shift, what happens then?
Well, low-frequency noise is less associated with quick noise burst than it is something that might be more ongoing. So I guess on balance between the two types of noises, the chance of it being there some hours later would be greater than what a typical noise associated with a high-frequency complaint might be.
So are you talking about, are we going to replace DBA, decibel, DBA with DBC then?
From high to low.
So we're not going to raise your high anymore?
Yeah, this is adding low in addition to high.
Yes. Yes.
So what, like what is low? What, what things would produce a low decimal?
Like a subwoofer, like a thump, thump, thump?
You want to speak at that city manager?
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of more of, again, to the vest of my understanding, and I don't mean to be an expert, but it's the difference between a sudden blast kind of noise and something that might be described as a humming noise, if you will. Pam, does that fit?
Like an air conditioner compressor?
Mechanical devices tend to show up in, in the literature as those that are more cause the kind of annoyance that's associated with low frequency noise.
What about a window air conditioner?
It could be a little bit of a low frequency noise, or it could have some high frequency. It kind of depends on the machinery. But a lot of times when you think of a low frequency sound is like the rumble of thunder, a train at a distance going down the track. Those are those low frequency sounds that you kind of think of, an earthquake, that rumble of an earthquake, that's low frequency. But it could be associated with machinery as well.
I, I think that the natural causes are those kind of things, but I think in modern day with technology and electrically driven sort of things, it mechanical kind of things that might be associated with heating, cooling, power generation, those kinds of things.
Could you talk, could you talk a little bit about the health effects?
Of low frequency?
Yes.
From some of the articles that we've looked at, the health effects are kind of more recently being studied because it's not as much of a, of an effect on your ears, like the higher frequency sound, that's what OSHA violations, hearing protection, all those are really trying to protect the ear from the higher frequency sounds because that's where you get the hearing damage. Lower frequency sounds, a lot of times affect more of a person's sensitivities, that, that kind of annoyance factor, just that rumbling factor. It's not as much of a damage to the eardrum and the ear itself as more of a, a feeling that they may have. So it's, it's different in trying to measure.
I know when we moved to our house on Ninth Street from where we lived on Eighth, when we first moved there, the train drove me crazy. Every night it would, you know, I could hear it. But after we've been there now 10 years, I don't even hear it anymore.
The whistle of the train might have been high frequency, the noise of the rails on the track might have been low.
Would be a low frequency.
Well, they blast, no, they blast their horn at every.
Yeah, that's high frequency.
Yeah, but, but after I lived with it a while, I didn't even notice it anymore.
And with the lower frequency sounds, from what I've read, it doesn't necessarily have to equate to the loudness of the sound. It doesn't have to be a very loud sound to maybe be effective. I mean, you could, you could maybe feel it. I mean, because you could, could hear a rumbling of a thunder in a distance, that's a low frequency sound, but it's not loud, it's not hurting your ear, but you are feeling that.
So this ordinance wouldn't put any business out of business?
Not necessarily, no. I mean, unless they were producing.
But what if they were? Could we shut them down?
Well, it does have, in our ordinance, it already has a section for penalties. Yeah, I think a class B misdemeanor.
I'm sorry, I can't get excited about this. I just, I mean, what's, is there some drive in this thing? Is there, I'm just, I don't get it. I'm sorry, I just, this.
What don't you get?
I just.
I guess I'd, I'd like to have an example of.
I guess something about the unintended, you know, we got police taking decimal readings or decimal C readings.
Well, I mean, we have, we already have in place if, if, if a resident complains of excessive noise and they call the police department.
They don't do anything about it.
Well, then why do we?
Because I have people that have complained, I can't tell you how many times about fat mows, I'll just say it.
Who are you saying, who are you saying don't do anything about it? Our police department?
We can't, we don't do anything about it.
I guess that's another, I guess.
We don't shut them down. And that's the only thing that will change it is for us to say, you can no longer have a band outside.
Well, not necessarily. I mean, you don't have to, you don't, you don't have to go, you don't have to bring a sledgehammer like that initially.
How do you get a band to be quieter?
Well, you talk to the, the person that owns the business, let them know that they're in violation of what.
They have to shut the band down.
Well, why don't we just take the ordinance out of the book then?
But I mean, I'm just saying.
I mean, you just said.
Doesn't this make it stricter?
Huh?
This makes it a lot stricter?
This deals, this deals with.
Sensitivity?
This deals with, yes, it deals with the other side of that.
The noise that's, you're sensitive to, not the noise that would be loud.
Well, we have, we have people in our community that are sensitive to some things and others folks aren't as sensitive to. So if we have an ordinance that address one side of it, that, then we should have an ordinance, amend an ordinance to encompass the whole, both sides of it. Now, it, it's not going to keep anyone from doing business here in the city. The whole reason we have ordinances is, 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 is right there. If you violate an ordinance, you get a, hey, God, you, you know, you can't do that, we have an ordinance for that. That's the whole reason we have them. Now, if we're going to ignore them, and the mayor says, well, no one does anything about them anyway, what, what's the point?
Well, having an ordinance like that, and most of my experience on the enforcement end is probably bandwidth music coming from live entertainment.
Outside.
And so it gives, it gives the public or whoever the ability to complain. And when we respond, the request is usually turn it down. And it's turned down, and then it's gradually turned back up. And, and that repeats itself, you know, throughout the night. So it is not to say because we don't quote unquote close somebody down that there isn't some enforcement, like said, as Commissioner Aaron said, it's not always about taking extreme action. But having said that, you know, you can't stay there and, and make sure that it's not turned back up. So there are some real, there's some practical issues with something like this.
Yeah, and for me, you know, I mean, I chose to live downtown, and it's, it's a mixed neighborhood, it's part industrial, it's all kinds of things. And frankly, whether it's, if it's loud music at night at a, at a place.
And I don't, I don't have a problem with fat mows.
Yeah, I mean, that's down to me because that's why I live, you know, if I want to live in a quiet place, I'd live where I used to live on the West End, it was quiet as a tomb. I mean, to me, it's just part of the vibrancy, it's part of what's your, the experience of, you know, whether it's the noise of the train or trucks down the Martin of the King or Park Avenue, that's just all part of the experience. And if it bugs you, go live somewhere that was quiet as a tomb, to me. I mean, I just.
Well, that seems.
I don't, I don't have any problem being in favor of this commissioner, but I guess you say it won't, it will not affect any businesses. Changing this will not affect a business in Paducah?
I don't think so. It would have, it'd affect any business here.
It wouldn't?
During, uh.
Then why are we doing it?
Because we have, we have an ordinance presently that, on the books, that says decibels cannot be above a certain, a certain level. And why do we have that?
Because it's loud.
Okay, and it's, it's someone's complaining about it being loud. So if, on the other side, if we have situations where the low decibels are affecting, I think the word was here used, sensitivities, and we have folks within our fair city that that, it's an incomplete ordinance. That's the way I look at it.
Does this cause Mr. Warden a problem?
No.
Not a problem at all?
No.
Okay. But to me, this one, sensitivity gets into a little bit more subjective. You know, how do you measure that as a same? It sounds like, I guess you can measure it from what you're, you're telling me, you can measure it for sensitivity the same as you can measure it for loudness?
Well, you want to talk?
Well, I mean, that's where the science gets a little difficult because the issue is sensitivity, and the research uses the word annoyance quite a bit. And, and the research talks about the, the psychological happenings as well as the physiological. So what's really not clear is, is what that decibel level, that def, that decibel level where it's set is not going to mean the same thing to everybody because it's driven by one's sensitivity. So the, the question is, who's it going to affect? I, I think that answer, we don't know. I, I don't have.
Have we been receiving complaints about this? I mean, is there a reason why all of a sudden this ordinance would come up? To change it for sensitivity?
What's a noise machine, Commissioner? Like, you know, things that you put in your bedrooms that have that sound for, for you to sleep better? Is that a, is that a low frequency or?
What do you?
White noise.
White noise, sound machines. A lot of people have those, just to block out any kind of outside noise.
Other sounds.
I've got one for Friday night because of all the music inside our place in Friday night, it drives, it's just, it's crazy. So I just turn that on, it kills everything.
Yeah, like they, you know, my granddaughter slept with one since she was a baby, that white noise, an iPod, you know, you put in there.
It might be interesting, do you realize in downtown Asheville, North Carolina, they don't even have a sound ordinance? I looked up today. They have no, none because they want this vibrancy, clubs, music. So in Asheville, they don't have anything. Just let it rip, and, and that's what they want.
Yeah, as long as this doesn't affect any businesses in town and cause a problem.
I don't know how we could say that for sure.
I don't know. My theory is that you have this, and then all of a sudden, then, well, let's tighten it up a notch. Well, maybe do another notch. Uh, I'm not, I'm not talking.
Well, this is the first reading.
It's first reading, okay. Don't worry about it.
We can talk about it.
We can talk about it. And we got two weeks.
Second.
Yeah, two weeks.
But I do appreciate all your work on it. You know, you've put in a lot of hours, and I know you're passionate about this, but, you know, I just have concerns, I just don't want it to hurt a business.
Well, I don't either. But at the same time, I want to make sure that, that we're just as resident friendly as we are business friendly.
Okay, city managers report?
I'll be very brief. I believe yesterday or today, the site plan for the new hotel was signed off on by the city. So things are continuing to progress very, very well. And request for executive session for land acquisition.
Who has that?
I got it.
Land acquisition?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that the board go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topic, future sale or acquisition of a specific parcel of real estate as permitted by KRS six one point one eight one zero one B.
Second.
Okay, and we will not be coming back, so.
We need to vote. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Just a second.
Commissioner Rhodes, would you ask Commissioner Rhodes to turn that?
Yeah.